Your meeting.
Is there a motion to go out of closed session?
Some move.
And go back into a regular meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify with aye. All those opposed, motion passes and we're back in open session. And we're back to our agenda schedule. And next on the agenda is a Highway seven corridor study presentation, and that is Lesenfalske.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland and Council. So as a council, maybe aware, a couple of years ago, MINDOT encountered a, did a safety study along Highway seven. And subsequent to that, subsequent to that, they initiated this corridor study. So the safety study was conducted between 2021 and 2022. There's been concerns over the corridor historically, but there was a fatality on Eureka that really kind of spurred this into the safety study. Currently, the study looks at the transportation needs, future improvements in the corridor, some improvement concepts. And then they're looking to do something, MINDOT's looking to do some upgrades in 2029 with a resurfacing project between Wildwood Ave to approximately Mill Street. And so they were looking at this as an opportunity to identify potential updates to the corridor that could be incorporated with that 2029 project. There isn't, there certainly isn't anything set in stone. This is, it's a concept. And so the MINDOT staff and their consultant have been working with the technical folks from the communities along Highway seven to come up with these alternatives. And now we're at a point where we'd like to get council feedback on these alternatives that we can provide to MINDOT in addition to the comments we've already provided. And then MINDOT will be opening this up for public comment as well, but they wanted to get this in front of council first. So again, I think that the, one of the biggest takeaways though is that this, this study is to be a guiding document when projects are developed. So this isn't the be all end all, but we certainly want to get council's feedback on what's being proposed through there. So to jump into this, there's three alternatives that are being provided and council, you have a handout that MINDOT prepared. The first is the no build, which is the current condition. And then they're looking at an alternative with roundabouts and then an alternative with some non-traditional intersections. And I have some graphics to illustrate what some of those non-traditional intersections mean. So here's the corridor with the roundabout alternatives. So they show moving from west to east through Minatrista here. We have a three-quarter access at Wildwood, which is actually Hunter's Trail. And that one initially, there was some discussion about removing that access point and I said, no. Hunter's Trail is a stated route. We need that access to Highway seven. So what this proposal shows is what we call a three-quarter access. So, so folks going westbound on seven could take that left turn into, onto Hunter's, but you would not be able to make a left-handed turn from Hunter's onto seven. So the, the traffic team has, you know, they look at what the turning movements are and those sorts of things. So I know that, you know, certainly that it's a more restrictive access than what's out there today, but again, that was just, it's an alternative that they're looking at along with this roundabout. They're also looking at putting a roundabout in at County Road 92. Leaving the King's Point roundabout, but actually striping it back to a two lane. And I know there's, there's been consternation with that and it was, it was striped as a two lane roundabout. And so when we talked to the team about that and what the concerns from the city standpoint are with it being a two lane, is that people were using the two lanes in the roundabout to pass. What the team reported is that when that round, when the King's Point roundabout was initially installed, the design parameters at that time had a certain distance for merging into the, into the roundabout. Since then, those design standards have changed and what they would look at at the King's Point roundabout is a longer lane and, and that would mitigate the. I, I see shaking heads and I appreciate that. I just want to let you know that when we brought that up, that was the comment that these longer merged lanes would alleviate that desire to do passing in the roundabout. So we can certainly continue to reiterate that concern with the team. And then again, if, if this comes to, if and when this comes to a project standpoint and it shows a roundabout, we can certainly have the MINDOT team come and address the council and have those conversations. They're also proposing a roundabout at County Road 44. And then further east in the, in the corridor, they're looking at some roundabouts as well.
They just not like the stoplight at 44? Like why? I mean, I know there's been accidents, but it's not like a massive accident area.
Well, there was, there was.
Right, right.
And why was, what happened?
It wasn't the light's fault.
So my understanding from, from Chief Falls was that it was a driver confusion on the left, on the left turning, that they thought that a green meant that they could go no matter what. Whereas a green means yield and turn if you can safely.
So couldn't we just put one of the stoplights that has the green arrow and the yellow arrow?
And that's like a much simpler.
So what, one of the things that I asked kind of a bunch of questions of Paul from MINDOT, one of the things they say roundabouts do is slow people down. And so, so then you still might have accidents, but they're going to be less severe.
Yes.
So you're not going to have as many fatalities and that's what they're trying to avoid. And once people know how to use roundabouts, data says they are safer. They are, they are safer. And if you travel overseas anywhere, everybody has roundabouts now all over the place. So once we Minnesotans figure out how to use them, but they do slow traffic down and that's what creates the better, the safer aspect of them.
Well, and then people hit it at an angle rather than it like.
Head on, correct.
Yep, right, right. But what I, what I'm more concerned about is the intersection at Hunter's Crest and the intersection at Highland Road. Because for future, so currently Highland Road is not a good intersection. I get that. But to have it, what they're, what they're recommending would be a write-out only. And then you'd have to go up, who knows where maybe, and then you'd have to turn around. And it's confusing.
Well, I made the point, I'm like, I wouldn't be able to take Highland home from council if they do that, which I don't like. I mean.
But that's, but that's not the only reason and we can't, we can't make that decision based on, on you. Sorry.
But there are plenty of people that people want to go.
That's right. But also for future development, because if you were to look at a map and David knows this, you go up Highland and on the corner of Highland and 110 on up here, there is about 40 acres that eventually will be developed. And when that develops, they can take 92, but they'll also take Highland and getting out onto Highway seven. And there's other areas too, that Highland is going to be the, the main corridor. So I'm concerned about that. So currently it might not warrant it, but I think in the future it will. And I'm not, I don't think it's a good expenditure of tax dollars to spend millions to create the Highland like they're saying, why not just create it as a roundabout today?
Yeah. So, and so that, that, thank you for, for mentioning that, Mayor. So this, this shows what access points would remain, either full access points or partial, like three-quarter. The rest of them would be restricted to a right-in, right-out, meaning if you're traveling along Highway seven, you can turn right onto the street. And if you're on a side street, you can turn right out onto Highway seven. And then you would need to utilize a roundabout or another intersection to turn and redirect yourself. And so the comment regarding Highland Road has been made, I've made that comment every time that Minatrista wouldn't support that. And so we had some conversations with the design team as far as putting, you know, would a roundabout be appropriate there? And they're looking at, you know, the spacing of Highland Road with respect to the corridor because, you know, later on in the slide deck and included in the information you were provided, they have, you know, a matrix that shows, you know, all these considerations that they're putting into these alternatives and, and, you know, the, the time, the travel time through the corridor is, I believe it's, the capacity of maintaining capacity and free flow of Highway seven is one of those. And so if you put another roundabout in, it diminishes from that, but it's certainly been a comment that MINDOT has heard before. So.
Well, and to the point of slowing down traffic, that would slow down traffic going into St. Bonnie substantially if there was a roundabout there.
Yep. And, and the comment that I provided to MINDOT with regards to Highland is if that access is restricted to a right-in, right-out, the Minatrista traffic would be going through St. Bonnie.
Right.
And I would be surprised if St. Bonnie residents and/or council would be happy with that alternative as well. So again, this is, this is high level stuff, you know, looking at, looking at this as a, as a guiding document, but they certainly do want to hear those comments. They've heard, some of them have come from me, but certainly I would be relaying any council comments as well. So the pros of this alternative is improved safety and reduced delays at the intersections. And then the cons that they identified are public acceptance, because there are some access points that are being either restricted completely or, you know, three-quarters at the case of Hunter's Trail and some longer travel distances.
So another question, David, have you looked at this and have you been able to kind of make some comments? Because I know development, we're talking about more develop, the bowl property potentially, possibly a crati property. Have you been talking to or making comments on this?
No, not, not at this time. I mean, a lot of very hypothetical situations. Obviously as soon as something's real and before us, we'll send it to them immediately, given where they're at in the process, but be a little premature for us to, you know, it's pure speculation at this point.
And.
I think if there's going to be some development-driven access point modifications, I think at that time, the developer will propose those and that might change or possibly even drive these things to happen sooner. Because right now Allison indicated this is going to be a potentially, the earliest is 2029. So.
Oh, okay.
If we have, if we have a development that hits next year, we might be able to do some of these in certain areas a little bit sooner and have it be paired with that development.
Okay. So they can make those adjustments? I mean, if they.
So this study doesn't, you know, any development through the corridor would certainly warrant another discussion with MINDOT. It's not, this isn't meant to be like, oh, we have a development. It's not consistent with what we showed for access points on, on the Highway seven corridor. The, what they've done though, the benefit of this when it comes to development is MINDOT's already got all the data on safety and kind of the vision for the whole corridor. So that when it time does come for development to occur along Highway seven, some of that background information is already available and has been vetted. So I think that's a benefit for any development team coming into the city. And again, they would go through, as Dave, as David mentioned, they would go through MINDOT as far as access points and review of their, of their roadway system and connections.
So, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, so I assume the roundabouts deal with the high incidence of fatalities from rear-end collisions, which I think that was the number one cause of death. But the second one was just single car going off the road. I don't see anything in here about that, or is there anything you can do about that?
That's a good question and I'm not, I'm not intimately familiar with, with the, the accidents that have occurred along the corridor. You know, certainly they want to present an alternative that would reduce the likelihood of all accidents, but there might not be something that's technically or economically feasible to address all of those, because some of those are driver inattentive.
Yeah.
You know, they certainly looked at some of these curves through here and, and that was part of their considerations with, with what the alternatives they provided. Oh, we just lost it.
I had the. Oh, no, sorry. I had the opportunity to listen to Chief Barnock from Orno.
Barniak.
Barniak. And he said, this year or last year was the first time in the history of driving that fatalities were caused by people texting and driving and on their phones opposed to being impaired. So I think these problems are more, we need to find judges that will actually punish people that are driving while they're on their cellphones than spending millions of dollars putting in roundabouts. And, and I think the problem is distracted driving, not traffic and the lights. That's just kind of what I'm hearing. I drive on seven several times a day. I live right off of Highway seven and one of those intersections is not a problem. And I think most people realize when they're looking at oncoming traffic and they have a green light, that they can't turn right in front of somebody unless they have a.
The other thing that MINDOT wants to do, they want to keep traffic flowing. And so what they look is, they look at daily ADTs and, and also projected AD, a daily traffic counts, okay? And then they say, okay, how can we handle, it's a two-lane highway, how can we handle this kind of volume? And I think currently they have about 14,000 traffic movements in this area, just in this segment. And they're projecting more like in the near future, how do you future, probably more like 20,000. And so, so that's the other reason they're trying to figure out how to keep the traffic moving versus these traffic jams. I don't know if any of you ever have, have had to drive up 169 through Elk River on a weekend. Okay. I'm just telling you how awful it is and I'm looking at Ally because she knows. It was just awful. I mean, it would be backed from Elk River, it would be backed up all the way to Rogers. I mean, I'm not kidding you. And so.
Thirty-five going north in the summer.
Right. It's, it's very difficult. So what they're, what they do is they look at this and they do projections and they say, okay, how can we avoid that kind of traffic jam? So it's, it's the safety, but it's also keeping traffic moving. So it's.
Is there a reason they just don't make it a limited access highway and get rid of 90% of the intersections?
So they are, they are removing a lot of intersections with, but I mean.
No, 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 just frontage. You'd have a, have to have a frontage.
Frontage road.
So like further, further east in this segment, so they, 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 they're identifying this as two different segments. They kind of have more of the rural part here, starting in Minatrista, moving to the east, and then they have another segment. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with, intimately familiar with like absolute closures, but I know that was on the table at one point with some of these access points, because they do want to encourage if there's, if there's a roadway system internal to a city available that they can remove access points, they certainly look at those alternatives. But with that comes, you know, now you're looking at, instead of just doing a construction corridor through Highway seven, you're now looking at, you know, do you have to realign things in the cities as well? So they're, they've certainly, I, I think they've left no stone unturned. They did have other alternatives through here, but these are the, the two alternatives that they're, well, including the no builds, but the two construction alternatives that they're bringing forward.
Raised median between intersections in these, that would, that would be like 12?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. That's exactly the, the example they provided.
And that did eliminate fatalities.
That, that helped, right. But then, yeah, you, you can't obviously have the raised medians where there's an intersection. But, yeah. And then I also asked, well, how far in advance of, let's say, a roundabout, do those medians go away? You know, the, so they said about 200 feet. So, so you can visually see the, the roundabout or whatever.
Aruba has medians in their roundabout and so you can't cut over in them, which I thought was genius. That was the big takeaway.
This one, this alternative four where they show the three-quarter intersection. So if you wanted it to go east on Highland Road, you'd have to go over three miles west to 10, right? To that roundabout and then come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you were to make a, a right turn onto seven.
Yeah, if you're leaving Buddy Boys.
With alternative four, there is no roundabout close by.
That's.
And you can't make a U-turn. So, yeah, that would be horrible.
It won't be going to Buddy Boys.
Six-mile round trip.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right.
Yeah. To that one, what is an RCI?
So an RCI, here we'll go over to that. So an RCI is, and I, these are terms that I am not in, that's a reduced conflict intersection. So this one, that's alternative number two that they're bringing forward or what they're calling non-traditional intersections alternatives. And so keep in mind, you know, again, these are guiding documents. Is it going to be, is this exactly either of these alternatives, what it would ultimately look like? Probably not. But, you know, these are certainly the, the talking points that they want to bring forward. So, so here as we move through the corridor, again, we're seeing the same three-quarter access at Hunter's, signal at, at 92. They showed the, the three-quarter at Highland, which, you know, at least we get access there, but still not the full access that, that they've been hearing from us, hearing from me from a comment. The roundabout at King's Point. And then they do this green tea at 44 and I have a graphic on that, that kind of explains it a little bit better. And then other.
Now, what is a green tea?
Green tea.
Because I didn't.
So green tea is on the top left there. So if you look at it, I oriented it so that it would be, it aligns with how Highway seven is at County Road 44. So green tea, you can see that eastbound Highway seven is split off from the turning traffic on, coming off of County Road 44. So southbound, so, so drivers on 44 that want to make that left turn onto Highway seven, you can see that there's, they have a signal there. And then they have, it's a little bit of a splitter there. So it's, yeah, they get a, an acceleration lane to come in and merge then with Highway seven traffic. This graphic shows it as, as multi-lane, but Highway seven would still be the, you know, the two, one, a lane in each direction, but it keeps that eastbound Highway seven free-flowing and separated. So essentially they don't have a stop condition there.
The eastbound doesn't.
Yes.
Correct.
But the westbound still.
Talk about confusing. I mean, but, okay.
Well, some interesting, yeah, interesting.
Again, I, I just think these RCIs are, are not going to work. Now, we talked about the RCI at Marywood and that I could see if they have a roundabout at 44, that would make some sense. We could maybe entertain that, but, because that's only a very short distance. So if there's a roundabout at 44, people could come out of Marywood, then go around the, a roundabout to go east. And I asked that question and actually Paul was saying, well, it would actually save people time at. So it wouldn't have so much of a problem, but we have to talk to the fire departments and police departments to see how that would work, because when they're, if they're on a call and they have to go in to Marywood, I would be concerned about the time it would take, because then they would have to go all the way up to Rolling Acres and come back. And that would be way out of the way. So we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah. So certainly we want to have those conversations as we get deeper into the details and, and providing some constructive feedback for them. That's certainly one thing that we would want our emergency services response times looked at.
So I think right now, I would say the RCI at Hunter's Crest, Hunter's Trail and Highland, no. But the other thing they said, if they did the RCI at Highland, they may have to improve that bridge. And then I said, well, you might as well just put in a roundabout then, because then it might cost less.
Yeah. So just to clarify.
Three-fourths.
Yeah, Hunter's and Highland are three-quarter access on RCI. RCIs are, are outside of Minatrista. They're the eastern three at 13, Minawash and 41. But I just wanted.
Three-quarters. I'm sorry. Yeah, three-quarters. There's.
Three-quarters.
Right. So anyhow, those are, but the good news is, and I don't see it in this packet, is they are talking about adding a trail along Highway seven. I think on the north side or south?
I believe so. I believe it's on the south side.
Okay, south side. So that would be nice.
Yeah. And so in Minatrista, you know, we've, we talked a little bit about frontage roads and, and that sort of thing. The challenge in Minatrista is the, the wetlands and the topography along Highway seven. Just to get some, to try to get some internal, you know, within the city off the Highway seven corridor, to get those connections would be extremely challenging from an environmental standpoint. So, you know, a lot of things moving around there, but that's, that's one that I don't know how we'd be able to get that, some of those internal.
Right.
Connections.
Via, with a frontage road, because it's just too difficult. So, but before this, so what happens is the city has to approve these improvements, I believe.
So ultimately, what the, what MINDOT's asking for right now is feedback.
Okay.
Got it from the technical folks. We've provided that. They're looking to get council feedback and quite frankly, to have council see this before it goes out, because it will be going out for public comment. So we wanted to make sure that councils saw this before residents do, so that, you know, if you get any, anybody calling you, rest assured, we've.
You know what, you know what it's about. And you can tell them what an RCI is and what a three-quarter intersection is.
Right. And so when we were looking through these, just to kind of finalize the conversation on the non-traditional and then we can talk about the matrix and the, the feedback that we've already provided MINDOT. Again, improved travel time along seven and improved safety are the pros. And then the cons are increase in delay on the side roads potentially, pedestrian crossing safety where there's no, where there's no signal, increased costs. These, these non-traditional intersections tend to have a higher price tag on them. And then some longer travel distances without having those, those roundabouts through the corridor. So I don't want to go through it too quickly, because there is a lot of information and I, I fully anticipate that council would want to take the time to digest this, but I wanted to have this discussion before, you know, providing you all this information so we could have some context on this. But this is an alternatives evaluation and it's included in the packet that you have, where they're looking at, you know, each alternative, does it really hit the mark on, you know, vehicle safety or walkability? And so this is something that MINDOT looks at when they're considering certain alternatives, whether it be no build roundabouts or the non-traditional.
So I'm assuming if it's green.
Green is good.
Green is good. Red is bad and yellow is.
In between, intermediate. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
And then again, the, some of the feedback that we've already provided to date was the request would be a full access at Highland. We did indicate that there was past issues with two lanes at King's Point Roundabout. We talked about the increased, potential increased emergency response time, particularly at Marywood. And then we did mention that access for future development along the corridor. And MINDOT indicated that, again, through this process, any, any development that occurs through the corridor, it would, having this study in place doesn't change how their process to it. What's changed is that they now have a lot of background information on, you know, what's the ultimate vision for the corridor? What are some of the volumes, traffic volumes that they're looking at? So that when these development plans come in, they can look at it from a corridor standpoint as well, instead of just looking at it, you know, okay, what's, what's happening at where you're proposing, if you're proposing an access or, you know, you're increasing traffic volumes on 92 or something like that. So there's some background information that's already been done, some legwork. So I know it's a lot of information. I know it's, I mean, some of these are, when you see, you know, a proposal for restricting access points to, to other roads, it can be a little shocking. But again, it's, they were looking at this from a corridor standpoint. This is, you know, it's, it's the full corridor all the way to St. Louis Park. And so before they, before they go through and, and look at alternatives, they're looking to get feedback. So if there's something right off the mark that council would like me to convey to MINDOT that we haven't conveyed already, I'm certainly happy to do that. And it's, it's not like, you know, if I don't hear from folks within a couple of weeks, that's, we've missed our opportunity. That's not the case at all. This is an ongoing process. Oh, I thought I had in here the timeline, but we're looking to.
Yeah, it is in here somewhere.
Maybe in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like final design or something like that, September.
September, final report.
Final report.
Yeah, so they'll be getting it, they'll be getting this out, you know, out for review. And, and again, just because it's, it's a study that's in place, any, any project that were to come along the Highway 7 corridor would still come through a municipal consent process. This isn't, this doesn't mean that, you know, if the city doesn't provide any comments besides what we've already provided them, that we're locking into it, it, it's still, it still goes through that process, but they want to know, like, oh, you know, they've been pretty adamant about Highland being a full access the whole time. So, you know, taking that into consideration.
I think we've kind of identified most of them, and again, there might be some, they might have to look into something regarding the access to Marywood for, especially for emergencies. So we need to do that. And I think everything else, we've kind of identified a single, single roundabout at King's Point. Here's the thing, I don't see, like, so they have the double, they have Highway 12, and as you're going, you've gone through Maple Plain, and now you're in Independence, and they have that roundabout. It's a double roundabout, but I don't know why or how that makes traffic flow better, you know, because you have to slow down no matter what. And also, so I don't know why we would say yes to a double roundabout when we've already, already tried it, and it's, it's, doesn't work.
I, I think it has to do with capacity. It's with moving more cars through that roundabout. So, and, and when Mackinthunes went in, we were talking about what the traffic volumes were on 7, and, and we're, if I remember correctly, we're not at that level where the two-lane roundabout was needed from a capacity standpoint. But certainly when that roundabout went in, and they looked at what are the future volumes that are anticipated on 7, that's why the two-lane came into play. And so that's the benefit of having the two-lane roundabout, is you can still get more vehicles through there. The challenge being, in this instance, there was, there were people passing through there. And, and we can certainly ask the technical folks that were, you know, KLJ and MINDOT, when you have more vehicles, when you're getting closer to that capacity, when you need that two lanes.
Then can you add that, right?
Well, and, and does that prevent people from trying to pass? Because now you've got two, two vehicles going through there, and pretty good consistent stretch, because in rush hour, that roundabout's getting, getting pretty busy.
But it's not, I mean, it, it actually works out really nice to have the turn lane.
Is it, is it a double?
Get out if you need to.
Right. Is it a double out by Mayor?
Um, no.
Single?
I don't understand why you put a double one in, and it's a single-lane road. Like, it's single, single, it's not like you're turning into, yeah, you still, you still have to merge back together.
I, I don't know. My, my guess is they, they striped it for what would ultimately be out there to get people used to. This is how you maneuver through this particular roundabout. So that's a good question for the team, and, and they might not, not know either, but I do remember when that was restripped from two to one because of those concerns, so.
No, I want to agree.
So I think you've.
Okay.
Kind of covered, I mean, I think we've covered. We like the trail.
Okay.
But as the trail goes under 11, for instance, that, they should do an underpass. The underpass then under 7. So they should figure out, so if you're on Highway 7, and you're on the trail, and you get to 11, then you should go underneath so you can connect to the trail that goes underneath 7.
Hmm, okay.
So just, you know, saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because you do not want to cross over at a roundabout. They said, I said that, I said, why would you put a crosswalk at a roundabout? I mean, it's the worst possible place for a crosswalk.
41, and all those people crossing from the school there, that just seems like you're going to have more accidents and fatalities.
Yeah, well, and at 41, they're actually, they're putting in a roundabout on, at 41, at the middle school. And I think that's this summer, if I remember correctly, because that, that one's been on the docket for a while now.
Okay.
So hopefully, they can, they can get some of those student movements, pedestrian movements at the actual entrance to the middle school.
I've actually seen roundabouts with lights to allow people to cross if there's a pedestrian.
Yeah.
They should just leave the stoplights in there.
Yeah. I mean, I could see pedestrian crossings at roundabouts that, you know, like we have one on Halsted. I mean, there, maybe. Sure, there's not a lot of traffic, but on Highway 7 or 12, no, not a good idea.
We have to steer all walkers away from Highway 7.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Do you need any, any other comments or questions of Allison, otherwise?
I'll keep the council apprised when, when MINDOT says it goes out for public comment, just so that you might be aware that other folks might be seeing it. We'll certainly share that with city staff, so that we could have a link on the city website, so that folks can go ahead and comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our fire, our JPA, kind of a quick update.
Yeah, I mean, so your fire JPA group is Mayor Whalen, Councilmember Repkin and myself. We've had a series of meetings. And we've started talking more about the formula to determine who pays for what, and we've been doing a lot of back and forth with that. We're working on JPA terms. We have a couple of those kind of worked out, I think, but there's going to be a series of other ones. I think we're kind of at a sticking point with the formula to try to figure out what we're going to do. We've had meetings with Spring Park and St. Bonnie. We haven't met directly with Mound, but we have put out that offer to meet directly, because it seems like Mound and Minatrista need to maybe get together to kind of work out the differences in what they think the formula should be, since they're the two entities that are, you know, 80% plus of, of the financial contributions. So we're kind of at that point where we're talking about it, we're trying to work through the things. I think our group is looking for maybe some direction as far as the formula goes, without getting into like.
We don't want to go into all the nitty-gritty details.
Yeah, so, exactly, because there's a lot of nuances, right? And we kind of tried to start the conversation by saying, well, what are your values as a group to form the formula? And that quickly went, we don't really care about that. We just want to know what the financial burden is going to be to each of the communities. And then it started going into this, well, what's better for each community? And we're trying to figure that out right now. So it's, it's becoming challenging.
Right now, so right now, we have contract with St. Bonnie and contract with Mound. And the formula for St. Bonnie is 50% market value and 50% is based on call hours. With Mound, it's a little different. It's a three-pronged thing approach, population, market value and call hours. The group, the one thing we do agree on is to do a simpler formula that's market value-driven and, and.
Call volume.
Call volume, and it's call hours. So here's where the sticking point is. We, we're, we would like it to be, our, our formula would like it to be 50/50. 50% market value, 50% call hours. For Minatrista, that is, and actually, not just for Minatrista, but that's actually the most fair way of doing it, and that's the most fair way for all communities, really. But Mound doesn't want that, because they would have to pay more, and Spring Park doesn't want it, because Spring Park's market value is, is nowhere near ours, but their call volume is very high. So they don't want that. So here, so then another one was floated, that 60% market value, 40% call volume. And then another one was floated, 70% market value, 30% call volume. And Mound and Spring Park kind of want that formula.
Well, and they want that formula with eventually going 100% market value. They want to transition to 100% market value, which, quite frankly, in our mind, there's no reason Minatrista would ever do that. We'd be paying close to 1.9, we'd be paying close to $2 million by year 10. Which if we're going to do that, we might as well start our own fire department.
Yeah. I'll, I'll say that the nuance with the market value was there was this idea that after 10 years, we would try to transition to a district. That would really, really put to bed that that wasn't the case at the last meeting. So I think the market value piece is off the table at this.
Well, that's, that's why we wanted to bring it to council, so we're hoping you will agree that we are completely against 100% market value, and Minatrista will not agree to those terms.
So 100% market value, what that does for Minatrista is, of course, because we're the growing community, we're adding 100 or so new homes a year, which drives up our market value. Our market value has been going up about, on average, 8, 8% a year, whereas the other communities, St. Bonnie, none basically, are very little, and Spring Park, very little, and Mound, also very little. So eventually, we will be paying over 50% of the, of the budget based on market value only. We decide, we said we would be willing to go that route if we eventually, after 10 years, were to transition and go over into a fire district. And that, that was totally set aside immediately. So we can't, we're not doing that. So we're coming to you, we need marching orders. So Kathleen came up with another alternative, which we, we would like to pitch to the group to see if they would do this. And her plan, I think is actually a good one, but, no, it is. I, I think it would be fair to everybody, but we would take a big hit the first year. So her plan was doing 25 call volume and 75 market value the first year. What that means to Minatrista is it would give us a 2.61% levy hit the first year. In other words, we would have to raise our levy just for, just for the fire department by 2.61% for that year. However, the spreadsheet that she did would then reduce, would, would bring it down to eventually a 50/50 split.
So by year 2031, it would be 50/50, and then it would hold firm at 50/50. So basically, we would be subsidizing the first couple of years. So that way, Spring Park and Mounds' initial hits aren't as high initially, which I'm hoping they would agree to. St. Bonnie is kind of irrelevant. They, they stay at 5% of the cost, no matter what kind of plan you put out there. They're just that steady, so it doesn't really impact them. And they, they specifically said, we're, we'll basically agree to whatever contract term you guys have, like, whatever you three come up with. So we thought this might be a good way to get Mound to agree.
Mound and Spring Park are kind of getting the biggest, are getting a big hit. We are too, the first year. So we're trying to bring them on board, and also with the idea that we're eventually going to do a 50/50 split. So, but we just, we just don't think 100% market value is in our best interest. So we're going to try and negotiate, and we just kind of want your feedback.
Why would we be taking a bigger hit around, who's then getting a deal?
So that they will agree to a 50/50 eventually.
Because if we get to the 50/50, they won't agree to just start at 50/50. We're fairly positive, because the amount that Mound's budget would go up, they won't agree to it. And Spring Park's would go up more than they can reasonably do that first year. So we would be, in a, in a way, we'd, again, we'd be subsidizing it to get them to agree to it, because then by the time we get to year 2031, when it's 50/50, we're paying 40% of the budget, Mound's paying 41% of the budget, Spring Park's paying 12, and then it's just level from there. So it's, it's more of a step for them where they can budget better. Yeah.
Whereas if we did a market value only, we would be about 51% of the budget, 49 to 51, depending on. But that's only after a certain number of years. Then keep in mind, we're going to continue to grow. So we're going to end up being more than 50% of the budget, if you do just market value. I guess the way we look at it is, you know, I don't look at it necessarily in terms of what's, what financial burden we have to carry. I look at what's fair, you know, what's fair for everyone. And, and if our neighbors can't absorb a big hit the first year, okay, let's see how we can then make this work. That's kind of how I look. But at the end, after four or five years, I think it needs to level out, and it needs to be fair. And so that's kind, and everybody needs, everybody needs fire service, you know, and everybody needs the apparatus, and everybody, you know, with, it's kind of like the treatment plant, you know? Everybody needs the treatment plant, no matter how much water you use or don't use. So.
What was the objection to the fire district? It seems like that would have been pretty equitable.
We don't know.
I mean, we, we do. It's because nobody else, there's only two in the state, and there's some major opposition to it, but that's it.
It's, it's literally that two, one person in particular just doesn't want to do it. So it's, the discussion is over with. And that is also the point of us trying to find a comparable formula where we're not paying so much over the long term. Like, we'll, we'll take the hit initially, because we can gauge that better than like this mindset of like, well, Minatrista's just going to be ending up paying all of this later down the road. Like, no, but we'll take it initially to, I guess, reach a negotiable settlement to move forward with it.
Yeah, I like the idea of essentially financially incenting them to get into it, as long as it's a firm commitment that they're.
Oh, yeah, and that the plan would be the terms laid out, like, the first year, it's this percentage, the second year is this percentage, the next one is this one, and then that's where it holds. And also, we've talked about, which is probably more details than you want, but the, the budget would step up, or it would, it would be, the first year, it's a 12% budget increase, just because of what they need for the two. And then the next year would be eight or seven, and that would be in the terms too. And then when it levels out at 4% in year 2031, that's when you need votes to go over 4% increase and all that kind of stuff. So like, the terms would be very, very laid out of who's paying what, the percentage, and then where it levels out, and that's where it stays.
I would consider building in some financial penalties if somebody does try to back out.
Oh, yeah, others, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, there's tons.
This, we're just talking right now. We just need to get past the formula part before we get down to the, the agreement. So there's a, I don't know, a 10-page, it's called a JPA agreement. And all of what you're talking about, that'll all be spelled out in that agreement. What, what it would take for somebody to back out if they wanted to, and it's going to be expensive. So.
Yeah, you want to make it financially not feasible for them to leave, once we do all this work.
So anyhow, if you're.
We're just kind of hoping you're.
Go for it.
And that we can say our council is adamant we will not agree to 70/31. Okay.
Or 100% market.
I think we're being fair, like you said, doing the right thing.
All right. Well, we will do our best.
Isn't it pretty common for, when you look at these fire agreements around the states for calls, is 25 to 50% of a.
Well, the problem is Excelsior is 100% market value. Yeah. So that's what Spring Park liked when they heard it, and obviously Mound loves hearing that idea. But like Chief Greg said, like the Medina long.
Medina, Corcoran, Hamel, Loretto.
They do a 50/51, so.
They ended up, because Corcoran and Medina are very similar to Minatrista. They're growing, and they see that if it went 100% market value, that they would be paying, you know, 80% or whatever, and, well, whatever, you know? And they, they ended up saying, hey, the most fair, the fairest, is 50/50. I don't know that we'll get there, but we'll.
We're going to keep trying.
We're going to keep trying.
And market value, it seems like it would make sense if the composition of the cities were very similar.
Exactly.
And that's why.
Retirement homes up there on, which I'm sure is.
Yeah. Yeah. No, you're right. If, if we were, like, let's say Medina, Corcoran and Minatrista were together, then 100, it wouldn't matter. I mean, 100, because we're, the composition is very similar, very similar. We're growing, our demographics are similar. I mean, yeah, and then 100% market value might be the same. But when you're dealing with a big, growing city, you're dealing with another medium city that's not growing, and then two tiny cities, it's, it's really difficult. So we'll do our best. All right. Okay, we'll keep you posted. Next, we have to talk about residential chickens. All right.
I'll hand this off to David.
Very quick, yeah, it sounds like chickens have come up here, and especially over this last year. It has come up, you know, several times in my time here, but it seems more prevalent now here recently. And as asked by the city council, they wanted to discuss this at a work session, put the current definitions of city code from some Chapter 11 that regards animals. Quick overview, farm animals are allowed in 95% of our city, because it's mostly zoned ag and egg preserve. The residential zone properties, you cannot have farm animals, and that's where chicken falls under that purview, unless you have a 10-acre parcel, then you can have chickens in the residential district. And there's not, obviously, very many of those in the city. So again, we put the definitions in there for you, for your consideration, and then it, it would be a very simple, if, if it is the direction of council that you do want to go down the path of allowing chickens in the residential district, second page of the staff report, it'd be as simple as adding a, a, a B section there. It's highlighted in yellow, where we. in yellow, where we, I think, a few numbers been thrown around there, but I think one, one that seems favorable would be three egg-laying chicken hens may be kept on residential lots would be a very simple and easy way if that is, again, something the council wanted to go down the path of doing. In our research and reaching out to specifically all the lake communities, we have a planners' group of all the lake communities that we talk to often, and we asked, how many do do this? There are several that do, but what the feedback we got is, if you're going to do it, make it simple. You know, don't do permitting, don't, you know, get in, get into any nuances because it just gets more complicated. And the other thing was, don't hold a neighborhood meeting regarding chickens, because they'll never do that again. Because just as many people as you think are in support, there's that many that are not. So.
I would be one of them. Keep your neighbors happy.
That was the one advice we got from one of the lake communities. So I would urge you not to do that. But again, this is a simple fix to it, if this is what the, the direction of the council would like to do. Would not require a, a, a public hearing. This is not Chapter 5. So it does not have to go to the planning commission, it's Chapter 11. And so it's at the discretion of council if you so choose to go down that path.
Can I say something? Luckily for Councilwoman Ruffkin, she has an HOA. That supersedes the city.
But who knows what will pass at the state level. So like, you can just rely on, hey, you have an HOA, you don't have to deal with it. Because the state is literally trying to take away my HOA's rights.
Well, the bill, housing bill or something like that, yeah. Well, anyway, that's a whole nother subject. I think what, what I found out is that there are a lot of, they call them outlaws in Minatrista, that have chickens, and no one's complaining, and no one knows, and nobody cares. I don't know who these people are, but I've been told. I don't have any chickens, by the way. But breaking the check. Come on over, I want chickens. And as a councilwoman, I don't want chickens unless the city thinks it's okay. I think that Minatrista is much less populated than Minatanka or Edina. They both allow chickens. A couple of people that I've spoken to that live here in Minatrista now have come from Chicago and had backyards that were 20 by 20, and they had chickens, and they loved it, and they never had any complaints. So I think, being that we're Minatrista, we should allow hens, of course, no roosters. I do think we should adopt something a little bit more like Minatanka, which is one hen per tenth of an acre. I have seven tenths of an acre. You know, if I had six hens, I don't really think.
That's a lot of hens. That's a lot of chickens. And then you have to think about the eggs.
And the things that come with, like, rodents come with them, and other, like, other animals come to, like, coyotes will come and try and.
We have coyotes in our area.
But like, it's not just, we're, like, they bring stuff with them, like rodents and feces and.
I think you're really against chickens, and there's a lot of people that are really for chickens.
We have tons of acres in Minatrista, and they can buy and have all the chickens they want. That's the cool thing about Minatrista. We have the residential, where it's not allowed, and we have the rule where it is. It's blended. You have Minatanka, you don't have the rule where they can do it. Chicago has no space to do anything. Like, we.
And yet they're doing it successfully.
But we have lots available.
There's a couple of things. Okay. There's a couple things, okay? One, you'd have to have, six or seven chickens does not work. And here's why. Because, one, you have to think of the poop, okay? Two, you have to think about the eggs. They lay, every chicken, I asked the resident chicken owner, they lay one egg a day. So if you had seven, I mean, what are you going to do with all these eggs?
Okay, I, Mayor, you are very informed.
You have to harvest them, you have to pick them every single day. Otherwise, you do, because you know who likes eggs? Skunks like eggs, raccoons like eggs, there's, what are possums like eggs? I mean, and then, and then there's the coyotes and the, what other ones? That like the chickens.
Okay, I'm back to, I'm, I'm back to our.
I know, but.
Bringing these, these.
No, but I'm just saying.
Into the neighborhoods that aren't necessarily expecting them to suddenly be there.
So they're there, and you just don't know about it. Well, they're all doing it very happily, and.
So if, if, so if, if the city, if they want to do it, you have to have a maximum of two to three, you have to say hens only, you have to have a minimum.
Keep it clean, keep them locked up.
But they have to be completely.
In the backyard.
Enclosed.
Yeah.
And, and it has to be 100% on the owner's responsibility.
Yep.
If they get loose and they do damage to other people's property, and it has to, and it has to also say that the HOA, if it does not allow hens, that it doesn't supersede, I mean, what I'm saying is, all of those things. But I'm, I think the minimum lot size needs to be half an acre, or half an acre, or something like that. I mean.
I, I, yeah, I don't think it's.
So Minatankas is one bird per one tenth of an acre. Can we say one bird?
Per acre?
Per one twentieth? No, because I live on a very large lot.
How big is your lot?
It's like seven, three quarters, three quarters of an acre. I could easily have in my backyard, which is huge, I feel, you know, three little chickens, and you would never know. And, and I don't have chickens.
One acre, one acre is what, 40?
I think there's a lot of people in this community that live on small lots.
4,000?
And we should allow them to have a little pen with two chickens in it. I mean.
I haven't looked at a lot of cities, but I looked at Maple Plain, and they allow them, but they do require a permit.
We don't want permits.
We don't want permits, but yeah.
They have a lot of restrictions on like, how close the pen can be to the neighbors, the setbacks. Does it meet the, does it need a permit? You know, if there's electrical work, does it have to, you know, be permitted? And that was true in Minneapolis and St. Paul. St. Paul actually inspects them, which just raised a big red flag for me.
Yeah, we don't want that.
They, well, no, but I mean, that means they're worried about it, and, and they're willing to put a lot of time and city time, you know, and effort into it.
Did any of you read the letter from Joe Rogers? Did you send that out to everyone?
I think everybody.
Yeah, and everyone should have read this. It says, it's a simple change to our ordinance. It simply says, small exception for foul. Four exceptions shall be made to subsection for foul. Minatrista residents may own chickens foul, one bird per, and we can change this. He has here one bird per one tenth of an acre, but must follow these regulations. Hens only, no roosters, must be kept, not kept in the front yard, must be kept, the area must be cleaned by the property owners, the shelter must be adequate in size, must be kept clean, the smell can't leave the property, et cetera, et cetera. It's, that's why I'm saying it has to be more than, you know, 10, 10,000 square feet. And those are the kind of lots, or 20,000 square feet. Those are the sized lots that are like in Turtle Creek, for instance. They're, they're not the 40,000 square foot lots. Not, many of them aren't. But if you were to do a minimum lot size and setbacks, and, and no lights so that, you know.
Right.
And they have to be completely enclosed, and they have to stay enclosed.
Yep.
You know, maybe you could make it work, but it has to have a minimum lot size. How many complaints have we had for people that have chickens?
We.
Have we ever had a complaint?
Claudia, we don't have them, not allowed in residential.
The point is, is there's a lot of people with chickens. We have had, that's my point. There are a lot of people in Minatrista with chickens. And we haven't had any complaints. So the neighbors must not care, or they must not be a problem. Or these people.
West Branch Road does.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Big time.
Yeah.
And they were in the, they were in the agricultural zone. Yeah.
Yeah, so if there's a problem there, it's going to be a big problem.
It's gonna be, I mean, if we do this, you're gonna have people who put these in, who don't take care of them, who have the chickens, they aren't contained.
I don't think people are going to come out of the woodwork and decide to go run on and buy chickens. I think that people that want chickens have them now, and we just don't know about it.
And that's fine. They're, then they're, until someone complains, and that's fine.
Well, I would like to have two chickens. And I'm not doing this for me, but now that I've been educated by all of these people that are calling me, I would never go get chickens unless the city allowed it, because I am a council member.
So hold on, let's just do a couple of things. First of all, we haven't had a lot of complaints because we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of people on small lots in the residential area that currently have chickens. So that's, that's probably why we don't have a lot of.
What is a small lot?
I'm talking, in the residential area, I don't think we have a lot of people that have chickens.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Oh, okay. How many?
Where are the people living?
Well, I'm not, I, I.
On County Road 44, there's one, one homeowner that wants chickens.
I, I don't even know who that is.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just know that, and I spoke to a woman the other day, I'm sure she wrote a letter. She's funny. She's an attorney. She's like, I'm an attorney. I'm like, oh, I'm going to be really careful what I say. And she was very passionate about chickens, and just that so many people in these little tiny cities, I mean, didn't you say, in Chicago? Wasn't it you that?
Uh, no, I know Minneapolis, you're like.
In Minneapolis. Allowed chickens in Minneapolis, for Pete's sake. We're Minatrista. Okay, let me just ask a question. Yes. Is anybody interested in a kind of a, how do you say, something with big limitations? Anybody interested in allowing chickens with a lot of regulations or limitations?
Yes.
Okay. Brian?
Yep.
Okay?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, gee.
And honestly, I view it more from a federalist point. Honestly, if we, if we're looking at, if we're making it subject to HOA, I, I don't have data, but I'm going to guess 90-plus percent of people that own lots that we're talking about doing chickens on are subject to an HOA. HOAs are closest to the will of the people. And so if, I think that's probably the better spot to put a blanket chicken, you know, chicken regulations on that's going to serve the people rather than at the city level.
So, so here's my, my take on it. If we put a lot of regulations, and, and probably more than what you would want, but some regulations, maybe two chickens on, on lot sizes that are at least, what, 20,000 square feet or something?
How big is that acre? What is 20,000 square feet?
Quarter of an acre.
A little under half an acre.
Half an acre, just, just a little under half an acre. And.
Kathleen, you look at an acre, be happy in your.
He's literally trying to take away that.
The chickens will be the least of your problems.
No, they won't.
So we don't have to argue about it. We know, we know your position, and we know your position. And I love you, Kathleen. I understand.
I don't want chickens next to me. I know how.
You're not going to have them. You have an HOA.
It takes a different precedent on an HOA, and you can change the rules. So you can't just go, we have an HOA, we're fine. Because the board on the HOA's changed.
That is true.
So what goes now for an HOA in any of the numerous ones could change next year. I mean, like, it's not.
We could, we could say half-acre lots then, which would really eliminate pretty much every lot in an HOA.
Yes.
In a current.
If you want to do a half-acre lot, fine. But if it's, it shouldn't be less than a half acre. They're, they're too small.
So that would be the compromise.
I would think a quarter acre would be more.
I think a quarter acre is fair.
No.
And one, come on, that's a big, I tell you what, Bonnie, is Bonnie okay? Okay, hold on. Let's do this. Let's, hold on just a second. Let's, let's do this. And this, this is why David is saying, do not to a public hearing. Think about how emotional you guys are. Now get a room full, this side and that side. So here's the thing. Why don't we, I'm going to ask David to do, to do us a favor and come back and just tell us, in Turtle Creek, Hunter's Crest, and Woodland Cove, how many half-acre or quarter-acre lots do we have? What is the potential? Okay? Then I, I, I kind of need to find out, what is the potential in these developed areas?
Okay.
For, for chickens? If, and what should we do? Should we do a quarter acre? Should we do a third acre, half an acre? Let's just say it's going to be between a quarter and a half, okay? Somewhere in that range. And then we're going to set, then we're going to set the maximum at, we're going to start out at two, if somebody wants to change it later. And then we also have to know what the setbacks need to be. Okay? And then whatever other ideas or restrictions we want to put on this, we'll bring this back as that. It's a compromise, but I think.
I don't care if I'm the only no. It's fine. We saw it last week, or last, I'm fine being the only no. I'm just.
But, but it's good to have nos and yeses and nabies, because then hopefully, we can have something that will be doable and still be workable.
Do we, do we know how many, is there some magic button you can push that tells us how many quarter acre lots we have, not in HOAs?
So you're going to have neighborhoods, I'm just clicking around, all of Turtle Creek's fine. I mean, like Saunders, you're going to have neighborhoods now that some of those neighborhoods, you're going to have lots that can and some cannot. You know, you're creating more problems there, obviously, because why can my neighbor have one and I can't? So, you know.
Put it this way, I think we have to have some more, more conversation on this, and we don't have time right now. So if that's okay, we'll bring it back with some, maybe some recommendations. Can we do that?
Well, I think what we can do is give you a kind of a dichotomy of, you want this or that, you know?
Okay, all right.
And I think we can do a kind of an analysis. I would stay away from like, putting a acreage number on there, just because it becomes problematic.
Well, we have an acreage number on there already.
Well, I know, but I think from the standpoint, David just pointed out, like, you might have neighbors that are, you know, .01 acres apart, you know, size-wise, that one can have it, one can't.
And then county isn't completely accurate. We're not going to always have a registered land survey on file.
Okay, all right.
The wetlands, what, what are you counting?
Okay, so that's fair.
Upland, dry land.
Thank you.
There's so many.
It, it becomes more.
If you're going to allow it, just.
Okay. Can we say anything under, can we say something like, under one acre, the maximum is two chickens?
No, I think these other cities have these rules in place.
They do. Why can't we just?
Some benchmarking, that'd probably be a.
Restrictions and everything is to keep.
Staff is going to bring back, our staff is going to bring back some information based on what they've heard here today. And based on their, their knowledge, we're going to depend on them, their knowledge, and I think you're making some good points. So thank you. What we're also going to do is, we're going to move the council, let's see, we, code of conduct, we're going to move that to our next work session, because we just won't have time. And just kind of FYI, this has nothing to do with any of us. We're good, we're great. We don't have this issue. I was thinking we need to do this before we have an issue. So that, that's why we're doing it. And a lot of, I checked with a lot of mayors, and there's quite a few cities, especially around us, that either already have it or are currently doing it. And we don't want to end up like a neighboring city. Anyhow, so that's why we're doing it. I just want to make it clear, it's not because any of us are, are a problem. So with that, I'm going to ask that somebody make a motion to adjourn, and we will be back at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. And who's second?
Second.
Kathleen seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, sorry, staff, to put it on you, but I know you'll do a great job.